Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 28, 2007 meeting of the Glendale Housing Authority being called order at 2:36 PM. We have roll call.
Authority members, Draymond.
Here.
Minci.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Prozian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Yusefian.
Chairman Weaver.
Here. May we have your report?
The agenda for the August 28, 2007 regular meeting of the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, August 23 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is next, please?
Next is approval of minutes.
Move for a second.
Moving to second. Objection. Minutes stand approved as submitted. Next, please.
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the housing authority may question or respond to this speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The matter may be referred to staff through the executive director for investigation and report.
I have no cards and nobody's coming up to speak on this issue, so our communication's closed.
Any authority member, any authority member or staff comments?
Seeing none?
Yes.
I take that back.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This will just take a moment. Last week, the housing authority approved the development agreement with Habitat for Humanity, and Habitat has now embarked upon the recruitment for families. As you know, that's a, it's a fairly substantial undertaking, and the families have to make quite a commitment. And if you, just indulge us for one moment, Sona Maradian is going to give you the details on the recruitment, the flyers, the meetings and that. Thank you.
Particularly for the listening audience.
All right.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and Housing Authority members. Staff would like to announce that the formal advertising for Kenwood project began this week. Information about the scheduled marketing meetings will be posted on the San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity website, as well as our city website. Information meetings will take place at the Verdugo Job Center located at 1255 South Central Avenue, Glendale 91205 on September 8, 13, 20, and 22 in 2007. The Thursday evening meetings will be held from 7 to 9 p.m., and the Saturday meetings will be held from 9 till 11 a.m. Applicants are required to attend one of these four information meetings in order to apply an application and have all of their questions answered before they apply. The purpose of these meetings will be to explain the concept of Habitat for Humanity's housing program, show prospective applicants' conceptual plans of the Kenwood development and the location map, and to have city staff explain any special criteria with regards to income, documentation, and any title restrictions imposed by the use of home funds. The application deadline is October 12, therefore staff encourages household interest in the Kenwood homes to attend one of our four meetings. If you have any questions, we recommend you call (626) 792-3838. That's once again (626) 792-3838. Thank you.
And does that close the business on the 12th?
Yes, the deadline to apply is the 12th.
Close the business.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
I have a question of...
Mr. Najarian has a question.
Oh, I do. I apologize. I do have flyers that I've made copies of. I will hand over to the city clerk to distribute to the members.
Mr. Najarian has a question, please.
And so the entire application and qualification process is being handled by Habitat? Is that correct?
Well, the initial process, yes. The application process is when the initial meetings occur. That's when they pick up an application. City staff will be there to also talk about our program and how our second silent is incorporated in this project. After that, Habitat will screen these applicants and come to us once they've done their initial screenings after the house visits and give us the most qualified, maybe about 15 applicants out of, out of the 11. They need 11, so they'll give us about 15 applicants, and then we'll screen to ensure that they're income qualified.
And they know what they're doing?
Yes, they have a selection committee. This is our sixth project with Habitat for Humanity, so we do review there.
Let them not forget the excitement that such a program application period can generate in terms of not just those who are truly understanding the program, but those who misunderstand what is going on. And I have a feeling they'll be flooded with, with calls, but that's perhaps all the better.
Definitely.
They'll pick the best candidates and families.
Definitely. We've been trying to promote this. As I said, we've been officially marketing it, and we've gone on several shows, TV shows, to promote the program. And so we've had several calls this week already, and we're able to explain it. We have people who speak in three different languages to be able to make sure that people understand what the project is about and the requirements.
Mr. Starbuck.
You touched on this a bit. How are we getting word out, community, to the people who would be most eligible for this?
We have it in the Glendale news press, actually, this morning's paper. We've put it on our website. Habitat has also put it on their website. We've gone on several shows, The Larry Zarian Show, Verge, the Haigaharunian Show. We will have it as a PSA on GTV6. We'll have it in Osparas.
By your vision, it's favorable.
In Osparas. It will be on Osparas. We send it to community organizations, service groups, Catholic charities, ARS, to ensure they are...
And based on our best experience, how many applications do we anticipate?
We get hundreds.
Hundreds.
And this is a larger project. This is the largest with Habitat for Humanity, and so we anticipate quite a few.
This is actually the largest that this Habitat has done, right? The San Gabriel Habitat has done the largest number of units at one time?
It did 16 in one.
16.
Oh, they did? Okay.
Yeah, this has a semi-subterranean parking, so that's also a new, new thing.
I think the people ought to understand, too, the maximum yearly income is a family of three of $53,300 to $73,400 for a seven-person family. So if you don't fit in that criteria somewhere, no need to apply.
You must have minimum $37,000 income as a household. That's minimum whether you have a household of three or, or five. But as you get larger in your family capacity, household capacity, there is a minimum base for that as well.
Which would mean, Mr. Chair, that city council members would not qualify.
That's correct.
Unless you have a large, unless you have a large family.
We're on the low side.
Good point.
Meaning we wouldn't meet the minimum.
You better put that on the agenda.
It does make, it does show us, though, these are, there are people, there are families that are employed. They have to have good credit, too, that have a responsibility, but they can afford to live here. And this, they are very careful on who they select.
There's criterias as far as who they're selecting, and one of the criterias is the need. They must have the need and live in substandardized housing. So if you have eight people in a one-bedroom, that's definitely posing a need.
But Habitat selects, correct?
They do the initial selection.
So it's non-political. That's important.
It's out of our hands.
It's out of our hands.
We just look at the last few they've given to us for income purposes.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, is there any other comments?
Should we adjourn?
Is there a second?
Seconds.
We stand adjourned at 2:45 PM. See you tomorrow.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 28, 2007 meeting of the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. Have the city clerk, please, call roll.
Agency members, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Yusefian, Vice Chair Draymond.
Here. May please have your report.
The agenda for the August 28, 2007 regular meeting of the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was posted on Thursday, August 23, 2007 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay.
Next item is approval of minutes.
No move.
Second.
Seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. I have no cards, and I see no one in the audience jumping up and down. No, no one is jumping up and down. Okay, so I will, so oral communications is closed. Next item, please.
Is there any agency member or staff comments?
No comments. All right then.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at 2:46 PM.
I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. May we have the roll call for Glendale City Council? Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian, Mayor Najarian.
Here.
And for redevelopment.
Agency members, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Yusefian, Vice Chair Draymond.
Here.
And may we have your report, please? The agenda for the August 28, 2007 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was posted on Thursday, August 23, 2007 on the bulletin board outside City Hall. The first item? Item one is Director of Development Services regarding the Alexander by Intercorp 201-unit 16-story mixed-use project located at 185 through 187 North Orange Street. At 1A is Agency Resolution certifying that the agency has reviewed and considered information in the final EIR for the proposed project, making certain findings and determinations regarding the effects of the project and adopting a statement of overriding considerations. At B is Council Resolution certifying that the agency has reviewed and considered information in the final EIR for the proposed project, making certain findings and determining determinations regarding the effects of the project and adopting a statement of overriding considerations. At C is a motion approving stage two final design review, subject to comments and conditions from the agency principal urban designer and the agency. At D is ordinance for introduction authorizing the execution of a development agreement by and between the City of Glendale and Orange and Wilson LLC and Southland Acquisition Group LLC. At E is council motion continuing the matter until a date certain as directed by council without further public notice. And finally, at F is agency continuing the matter until a date certain as directed by council without further public notice. And who's, Mr. Weaver?
Question on these motions, C and D are what, agency or council?
The, motion one, C, is agency. The ordinance for introduction, at D, is a city ordinance.
But D is...
However, council, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. Chair, members of the agency, were recommending that the council motion at E and the agency motion at F be adopted, recommending that that date certain be September 4th, given that the planning commission was unable to make its findings and determinations on the development agreement two weeks ago, yeah, on 15th, and is scheduled to do so tomorrow, the 29th. And for that, that's prerequisite to the city councils being able to consider the statutory development agreement.
So we have no discretion at this point, essentially?
You cannot, essentially, no, given that the discretionary action of the development agreement, prerequisite to taking that action, is certifying the EIR.
We can do that, 1A and B.
In order to certify the, you could certify the EIR at this point, in fact, but you could not act on the, introducing the ordinance until such time as you have received the findings from the planning commission on the consistency of the development agreement with the general plan and with the applicable specific plan, in this case, the downtown specific plan.
C? How about C?
Motion, you can act on A, B, and C.
No D.
But not on D would need to be put over.
What issues did the planning commission have?
The planning commission had, was not yet in receipt of the...
They don't have anything.
Well, the planning commission did have the final EIR, but they felt they needed additional time to review that EIR, particularly, probably with respect to the land use section. This is the first project that we're bringing forward that, under the DSP, that is utilizing the signature design incentive and a development agreement that is applicable to confirming that signature design incentive, and they needed additional time. Mr. Landis, I think...
Their opinion is only, their opinion is advisory, though, right, since, in fact, this is a redevelopment zone and so forth?
For purposes of the EIR, that, that's correct.
The EIR.
Yes. They felt that they needed additional time to review that document.
Although, again, a reminder, because you're using a development agreement, the planning commission has to pass on the issue of a, of a development agreement because it's essentially a zone, zone change.
It is a recommendation to you.
But we make the findings for overriding conditions.
You do, you do that. You certify the environmental impact report and make the findings for overriding...
We can do that today.
You can do that today, that's correct.
Although, we should point out, Julian mentioned that you could do A, B, and C, but I thought they had raised questions about the design.
They did. Mr. Mayor, Chairman.
Yes. So you'd, so I presume you'd want to wait for those comments from them on design before...
How many times have we seen this?
Approving stage two.
It's, as Ms. Ben Biden had said, this is the first time we've used the incentive of signature design. The planning commission needs to make a finding or would want to make a finding that, yes, in fact, that is signature design, so that they can make their consistency finding with the downtown specific plan. And that is one of the issues before them for tomorrow.
Then what are we doing here, Mr. Mayor?
Does that leave us? Well, that's why we're recommending the whole matter be held over.
So...
No, we wouldn't recommend, we wouldn't recommend that you act on A, B, or C or any of them. Hold them all over until you hear the matter and you can get all of the planning commission's input before you take action.
So you want to write E and F, eh?
No, we recommend you hold all the matters over.
Yeah, but that's E.
E and F.
I'll entertain a motion for council on one E with the date being September 14, 4th.
Let me ask a question. On the issue of design, so the planning commission can also make a determination on what signature design and what isn't?
They, they could, and I'll recommend, make sure that legal counsel keeps it straight and narrow. They could say that they don't believe it meets the, the standard for signature design, in which case they would recommend to you that it doesn't, in fact, meet the, it's not consistent with the downtown specific plan. As I understand, though, you have that final, you make that final decision. You could say...
Mr. Starbuck.
Yes, it does, and we'll enter into the agreement.
We're, we're looking at this issue of signature design because, you know, the staff has a view, and that's the basis on which the matter was first brought to you in, in design stage one review. It has seemed to me that, that that question of signature design is one that should precede, frankly, the planning commission's action and should probably come with design review stage one, so that the agency says, yes, we concur, this is a signature design based on what we see in design stage one. That matters, then, given to the planning commission as a given, and their role is to look at the essential zoning issues that are inherent in the, in the DA based on the fact that you've already anointed it as a signature design. So we'd take that question off the table. We don't have that set up yet at this point, but I think this, this notes that there's an adjustment we should probably look at doing before the next project comes to the door.
But I would tell you that that would be for projects down the road. Many of the projects in the pipeline now already have stage one approval. So they would be coming back in the same situation as this.
Mr. Mayor, I know at the very beginning we started on this road, I pushed for signature architecture. So we see buildings that are unique to Glendale and the design. So I think it's fitting. We know what was in our minds' eyes. No, no disrespect to the planning commission, but I think we ought to be the ones saying, yes, we think this is signature design, ultimately.
And you do have that, ultimately, that is your decision?
Well, ultimately, but not putting it on planning commission to say, we don't think it is. And then we come up here and say, well, we think it is. And then planning commission says, well, what the heck are we doing here if they're not going to listen to us? You know, we've been through that with different commissions. I don't want to go down the road on this one because we put this thing in, staff has looked at it, Allen's looked at it, and I think we're the finally safe. We think it is without entertaining what the planning commission or anybody else thinks. Just my own opinion.
I agree with Mr. Weaver, and I've looked at it.
Thank you.
And add my name to the...
As we've kicked around, Mr. Mayor, it just seemed to us that the, the signature design and the incentives drive so many things in design, and frankly, then begins to drive the development agreement. I mean, if they're going to take advantage of signature architecture in order to get more stories, that drives so much of the project.
Yeah.
That determination should be made upfront.
Yep.
And if it's not signature design and they still want to build a building, then they got to lop off so many stories in order to make it fit.
Good point.
So it just seems that, that determination needs to come right at the beginning, so they know what they're designing to and what the standards are. So we need to, we need to look at that whole process.
Mr. Draymond.
Well, I, I wasn't here, obviously, for the beginnings of this project.
Of course.
I didn't want to surprise you, Mr. Weaver. However, I want to speak to this from a slightly different angle, and that is, as I've said many, many times prior to coming here, as these kinds of projects relate to historic preservation. And we all know that historic preservation deals with older buildings sometimes, but it also deals with new buildings. It deals with making sure that the new projects we create are and will be the historic landmarks for the future as well. And that's why it is so important that we look at signature designs. These are the buildings we're going to look at 75 years down the line and say, and say, "That, Mr. Weaver, what a wonderful thing he did."
What an engineer.
On, on August 28, 2007.
You know, I just don't want to live long enough to see them implode to take this one down 50 years from now.
So I just want to add my two cents on that, since I cannot take the credit for having been here from the beginning.
You're a good man.
Again, it is not a matter, in my view, of taking anything away from the planning commission, but it's also a matter of keeping a project on schedule as well.
And you do know this has a historic feature to be retained.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. So, in any case...
That could grow the design.
Those are my three cents worth.
Mr. Mayor, one other thing that, that came up as we were, that's brand new with this project, is the use of tandem parking. In the downtown specific plan, you approved a, a, a concept that would allow tandem parking with an approved valet plan. So as part of this project, we've asked the developer to put together the plan, their valet plan. It is included in their staff report, and we would be asking you to make a, a finding or adopt a motion saying that, that we understand the valet plan and we approve that.
Okay, you're not, we're not going to that discussion today, right?
Not today.
Okay, and it's in there?
It's in here.
It's in there. Understood.
But I wanted to make sure that you were aware that will be an item. We'll, we'll be amending the report to include that for next week.
Takes care of my questions.
Okay, so will someone make the motion at one E? Is there a second?
Put a council second.
Roll call, please. Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
I'll move 1F for the agency.
Second.
May I hear the roll, please?
Also September 4th?
Yes.
Yes.
Agency members, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Chairman Yusefian, Vice Chair Draymond.
Yes.
Will we adjourn for the council?
Counsel's adjourned.
Will we adjourn for the agency?
You're adjourned.
Do you want us to retain all this, or you want to give us another copy?